We need is one of those others from last night's debate.
Yep, right. Beep beep beep. Speaking of beep beep beep, here we go. So call this meeting to order. Uh, if you could have the invocation from Vice Mayor Carroll.
We're thankful for this town and its residents. We're grateful for all the work for the betterment of our community and all we serve on this behalf. Let those who work here and those who serve here be ever mine of the town's vision and mission statement. Grant this council the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, personal peace in our lives and joy in our task. Amen.
Amen. If you will join us in the pleasurable evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, thank you. You have roll call, please.
Mayor Foley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Alwater.
Here.
Let the record show that Councilmember Altieri and Councilmember Smith are not present.
All right, we have three members out of five. Uh, as that town attorney, we have Quorum.
Yes, sir.
All right. Quorum being present. Uh, welcome to the regular town council meeting. Um, item number two, agenda reordering deletions or emergency additions. Are there any items council wish to bring up regarding item two? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Uh, presentations and proclamations, we have none today. Item number four, comments from the public regarding agenda items. So this is the opportunity for any member of the public to comment on specific agenda items as opposed to general items, which you can do at the end of the meeting. All right, there are none, so, uh, at this point, we'll move to item five, which is the consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a roll call vote.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater.
Aye.
Let the record show the motion passes three. You're up.
All right, thank you. Uh, the mayor's report, I have, uh, one item today. Uh, it relates to the issue of planning for our water and wastewater utility services going forward. So we all probably are aware that we have an approaching deadline of April 1, 2024, to give either a notice of termination or renegotiation of the franchise agreement with the city of Euro Beach. We do have a pending appeal to the Florida Supreme Court concerning the reuse water dispute, uh, which we believe the city of Euro Beach has breached its agreement with us in many respects. We filed our statement of jurisdiction with the Florida Supreme Court earlier this week. Uh, it may be some time before we hear anything one way or another from the Supreme Court on that. Uh, that being said, I think it would be prudent to move forward in planning and assessing next steps in light of the April 1, 24, 2024 deadline for the notice of termination or renegotiation, and particularly because we may not hear anything one way or another from the Supreme Court before that time. Uh, but also because of the, the past history we've had with the city of Euro Beach Utilities, I think it is in the interest of our town to evaluate all options going forward, not just with respect to the April 2024 deadline, but with respect to longer term planning, uh, because that franchise agreement with the city of Euro Beach will have a term that ends as well, uh, approximately 15 years after, uh, the initial term expiration. So my proposal, uh, is that our staff evaluate options to ensure that our citizens receive water and wastewater utility services of the highest quality and at the most reasonable price. So to put a finer point on it, uh, the point here is I think we need to consider a range from negotiation of the franchise agreement with the city, if they're interested in any kind of renegotiation, probably not a very likely option, but, uh, uh, we've always been one to try, all the way up to obtaining service from any other alternative suppliers, uh, not just in the short term, but in the long term when, when the overall agreement with the city expires. Whatever approach we take, I think we need to protect our citizens in the short term and the long term from unreasonable rates, uh, particularly because we don't have an electoral vote of voice over the ratemakers in the city of Euro Beach Water Utility. Uh, this all sounds familiar to people who were involved with the, um, so-called electric wars. Uh, that was a fairly long-term process, uh, but in the end, uh, I believe we ensured reasonable rates for electric and the best, best service possible for our citizens. So although I prefer not to be required, uh, for this council to have to consider litigating with the city any further, uh, I think we need the staff to consider evaluating our legal options. And in addition to that, uh, I think we also need to evaluate our longer term options uh, when the franchise agreement overall expires. Uh, and that would include looking at another alternative, uh, water supplier, uh, including the county. Uh, and it may very well be that in the future we'll see some private suppliers coming into the market. We just don't know, but there are things that really need to be considered now and, uh, and not, not put on the back burner. I would also note that if it wasn't for the support of this council, uh, to file the antitrust suit in which we got a very favorable result, uh, we wouldn't be even, uh, at least in the city of Euro Beach's eyes, able to consider the county or an alternative water supplier. So, uh, that, that victory by way of settlement where we got all the relief that, that we requested, uh, permits us to consider longer term options. Uh, and, um, I guess what I've learned is that in the context of utilities, 15, 25, 30 years is not that long now. Uh, we really need to be planning for these things now as opposed to later. So, uh, I would ask just for a consensus that, uh, our staff take steps to evaluate all options, uh, make a report and any preliminary recommendations for our consideration if appropriate at a future council meeting. Uh, of course, this will require, uh, staff, in particular, our town attorney and, uh, Mr. Harper to consult with our legal advisors. I don't see any impact on our budget. Uh, we have, we have plenty of money budgeted for this, so it will be well within the range of, uh, what we see. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to council. If there are any questions or disagreements with this approach, um, please voice them out.
Uh, well, uh, thank you for those remarks, uh, and setting the stage, uh, Brian. Uh, I'm wholeheartedly, uh, in agreement, uh, with, uh, your proposal. As distasteful as, uh, the process of renegotiating a franchise agreement with the city of Euro Beach might be, uh, it is one of our options, uh, but I am, um, 100% behind looking at all alternatives and making the best decision that we can, uh, uh, short, medium, and long term, uh, for the citizens of Indian River Shores.
Thank you. Councilman Alwater.
The remarks from both you gentlemen, so I won't repeat them.
Perfect, thank you. All right, do you have enough direction to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, terrific, thank you very much. All right, with that, if, uh, the council members present have any other questions they'd like to pose to me at this time on any other item, otherwise we can move on. All right, let's move on. Councilmember Alwater has been, uh, fairly busy this, this August between, uh, the report that you're going to give now and, uh, um, I suppose later on a meeting to report on Indian River Shores. On our behalf, thank you.
Okay, uh, I attended the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference in Orlando. It was three days, and there's a lot of interesting information that one can pick up. I'll try to go, uh, quickly through, through mobile, uh, sessions on various topics. So I'll just do, uh, I have one presentation to go through with PFAS. Before I get to that, I'll just hit some other, other highlights that I think my fellow, uh, council members and, and town citizens need to, uh, know. Uh, there, uh, there was a meeting of the municipal administration legislative policy committee, and there were three things in there that I want to bring to your attention. Number one, the state legislature passed a law called the Liblocal Act that tried to create incentives for additional affordable, uh, housing. And there was a lot of discussion by fellow, uh, local government, uh, members. What this, what this law requires that, that if you have a piece of property that is either listed as a commercial or industrial zone, that there is an ability to put affordable, to put housing in there as long as 40% of units are considered to be affordable, meaning that they can be occupied by somebody that has a income, uh, no, uh, higher than 120% of the median income in that area. And there was, but there was a lot of concerns, uh, about that, that, uh, people, that developers would come in and try and jam these, uh, a large number of units in very small, uh, pieces of, of land. I didn't understand the, the total input of it because we haven't dealt with it. Uh, one person there mentioned that a developer came, was trying to put 90 units of housing in 5 acres. So, uh, you know, we, we, we have a little bit of commercial and industrial, uh, zoning, uh, but most of that is occupied. I don't really see that as an issue for us. The other thing is that if I understood correctly, if there, if a town or municipality has an inventory of land, they have to post it on their, their website, so it could be potentially available for this type of, uh, affordable, uh, housing. Uh, the, uh, second thing, there was a discussion about rental homes and some, uh, a lot of the issues that people, uh, the towns have had, and it was just pointed out that, uh, if one has a homestead exemption, it makes it very difficult to, uh, that it have a rental property that that could be taken away. And I spoke to the town clerk, he's on top of it. So you recited, seeing that came to me off, recited from memory what the limitations are on rent. Uh, do you want to get a firm real quick or?
You can't rent it more than 30 days for two consecutive years.
Okay, so, so just.
You'll lose your homestead.
It's just, uh, another thing to, to think about when we look at code violations. Uh, the third thing, there was a discussion about the business impact estimates, uh, statement. This is a requirement under law assigned by government standards that says every time we do a ordinance other than a prescribed set of ordinances, say, for example, on budget or other things of that nature, the town has to come up with a business impact estimate statement on what that might do through a business as we can. The difficulty with that is what business do you look at? A, a ordinance is passed will have a much bigger, not much bigger, a much different impact on a bank as opposed to a retailer or as opposed to a barber shop. It's sort of an insane piece of, uh, legislation. So I've had discussions, uh, uh, with the, uh, deputy town manager, the town manager, about that, uh, potentially come up with a, a list of businesses that we have to, uh, think about. And I also passed along, uh, information from, there was, uh, there was a meeting of city attorneys. I passed that, did you, like, we passed that on to you about ways to approach it. So it's just something we're gonna have to, uh, uh, keep, keep an eye on. It's a big, big state of flux at, at this, uh, point. Uh, there was a meeting on cyber, uh, security. Uh, I think at some point later on this year, we're gonna have a, a shade session and discuss, uh, cyber security and so forth. But it was an interesting session, talked about that there is a Florida Local Government Information System Association. I recommend the town manager we, we should join. There's a Cyber Florida Initiative, uh, which the state is, uh, funding and, uh, to look at. They're assessing if there are holes in your system. They have 155 question, the question, uh, questionnaire, uh, to look at. There's a lot of training and so forth, uh, available, so that's something that, uh, I think we should clearly take it, take advantage of. And just to point out that, uh, now in the state of Florida, municipality cannot pay ransomware anywhere. So somebody comes in and tries, locks up your data systems and says, you know, send me $500,000 in Bitcoin. Under law, you can no longer do that. Unfortunately, the city of Euro Beach got nailed twice on that over the last several years. This time they paid over, reportedly paid over a million dollars, so that's something to figure out. So we're, we're gonna take okay. Uh, the keynote, uh, presentation was by an individual named Kevin Cersei, who is, uh, an expert in, uh, artificial, uh, intelligence. And, uh, you know, this, this is something that I think everybody, you know, whether it's a municipality or a business, you have to look at, it has, it has advantages and disadvantages. The advantages are that, uh, you can take some of the drudgery out of doing certain tasks. For example, he, he had just happened to pick out, uh, uh, Euro Beach and put together a, asked, just typed in the command, uh, you know, create a tourism brochure for Euro Beach. And went out, looked up the different aspects of Euro Beach, and came up with a full page that when you read it looked pretty darn good, and it was literally typed into, uh, one command. Uh, his business is currently working on a, a system that will take care of a lot of the screening and development plans. So the whole idea behind this is, is that rather than have to, for some of these items, rather than have to create a strategy act as a, as a, as an editor on, on things. And I can, I was discussing this with, with one of my friends who used to be a bond trader who worked for me at Vanguard. He's now getting his doctor, uh, who worked in his doctoral thesis at University of Pennsylvania. He says he uses a chatbot, GPT, at least, uh, once a day. He gave an example where he's written these two sentences on a subject, and he's trying to come up with a sentence that will join them together. He just types that in, and normally says he comes up with something that is pretty good. Now, the downside of it is, you know, visually, you can, you can create all sorts of images. It's getting annoying. You can't tell the difference between what's real and what's not. You can, you get a, a big enough voice sample, uh, you can recreate your, your wife's or your daughter's and your grandmother's name, you know, uh, our voice, they're calling you up and saying, uh, "Dad, I'm stuck out someplace, uh, can you wire me money?" And one thing that came out of it to me, and I've already done this with my kids, uh, and, you know, some, everybody thinks about their loved ones is create some sort of a code word that an AI engine won't know. So if they call up and they're asking for money, okay, what's the code word? So just, just something to, uh, uh, think about, uh, there. The last thing I wanted to go through, which is up on the screen, and, uh, and this is PFAS. So PFAS are, uh, as I, and forgive me, these are the slides that, uh, were put out there. I know it's very hard to read out, out there, but, uh, there, there are a group of man-made chemicals that they talk about a lot in the press, that, uh, potentially are, are linked to issues with the human body. They're, they're essentially everywhere. So according to what I was told, if you take a sample of any of our blood, it'll have PFAS, uh, uh, in there. So now the EPA is, if you could flip to the next slide. So they're, they're, they're everywhere, all sorts of packaging material, uh, and, and, and so forth. So the question is how, what is, you know, flip to the next page, uh, you know, what are the impacts from low levels of, of PFAS chemicals? So the question becomes what is the limit that the EPA and the state of Florida is trying to target to, uh, protect our health? And that, that's really up in the air. This has really just gotten momentum frankly since, uh, 2018. If you flip to the next page, uh, you'll see that, uh, they, they keep changing the, the guidelines as to when they're gonna come up, uh, the dates with guidelines on different things. So, uh, it, it's, it's a moving target right now, and these probably are going to be pushed back again. Frankly, the state of Florida is punting this to, to the, uh, to the EPA. If, if you flip to the next page, uh, but so. So these are EPA proposed action items. If you look over the upside there, it says the proposed, uh, MCL level to detect things and forcible level. It's four parts per trillion. Just to give you some sense of what that is, if you built a tank of water that was 1,200 feet on one side, 1,200 feet deep and 1,200 feet high, so just slightly under a quarter of a mile, you're looking to detect four drops out of that tank of water. So it's really crazy, and there's questions as to whether you can do that and so forth. So how does that impact the town? And that's on the, on the next page. And again, this is all a state of flux. So there's something called MPDES, non-point, uh, uh, I don't get what the acronym is now, uh, but it's basically, it's a, uh.
It's the natural pollution discharge for the.
Thank you, sir. Okay, appreciate that. So every time we do a, uh, water comes out of the town, it doesn't go to a stormwater system or, uh, or the water doesn't come from a potable water, uh, I'm sorry, a sewer system, sewer system. It goes into the stormwater then, or if there's water that comes off a, a development or things of that nature, we have to have a, a permit for this. So, you know, I asked the question about detection. Do we have to start to measure it? And the individual who was doing the presentation says, "I'm, I'm not sure. Most people do," and I brought up our circumstances, "we don't have a water system, we don't have an airport." Uh, you know, we, uh, you know, and, and we sit on a barrier of ion and so forth. He thinks, he said, "I don't think we have to do it, we're not sure." So that, that could impact us from a, uh, from a budget perspective. So, uh, they're also evaluating, uh, I wanted to mention this to the chief. He probably knows this, and I mean, chief already, if you put the next page. They're looking at firefighting academies and exposures potentially there. And there is a, a map with all the different firefighting, uh, academies, uh, down there. And, uh, and one of them is, I have bracketed there, highlighted is Indian River State College. So, uh, so what else is going on here? And I'm, I'm just about, uh, done. There's tremendous amounts of litigation going on. There's something called multi-district litigation. So there's 2,500 plaintiffs seeking punitive damages, cost of assessment, remediation, and cost of treating water. And one of the bellwether cases, well, before I get to that, you flip to the next page, please. I know I expect you to read these, these are all the litigants that are around, and it goes on the next page. These are just the ones in Florida right now. And the individual who might have had an axe to grind, uh, who, who I think was with the law firm, says, "If you're not suing somebody, you should think about them," which is, uh, sort of troubling, but, uh. So, but the, really the bellwether case is just down the road from us in the city of Stewart. And they have gotten a lot of money. So this came from contamination from the, I believe, the, the airport down there into their public water system. So the red box I have highlighted there in the middle, defendants in the case, and Shumors, Dupont, Cortiva, they agreed to pay just the city of Stewart $1,185 million mitigated, uh, that. They're suing three M, and I think the settlement is gonna be, end up being just a little bit, uh, about, uh, 12 and a half million, uh, dollars. So, uh, flipping ahead a, a, a couple of pages, we've all gone through, uh, to those of us who are old enough that used to change their brakes, uh, on their own, uh, with the asbestos, on, on brakes and everything else like that. PFAS is going to make the asbestos litigation look like a walk-around park. I mean, this, you know, I don't, I don't know where the hell this is gonna go, but it's, uh, you know, what's the estimate of the cost of assess, remediate plus personal injuries? Your guess is as good as anybody, but it's likely not to be enough. So my point, and bringing this to the attention of council is, I, I don't know what we do at this point. It should certainly be, you know, be in our mind, uh, the town manager and town attorney follow this. I don't know what the implications are for our town. There's certain implications for us as a county taxpayer and a state taxpayer. And, you know, possibly because at this point we're hooked in with the city of Euro Beach, uh, water system. They, they have somewhere wells out by the, uh, by the airport. So I don't know where this is gonna go, but this is gonna be super, super ugly. I think this is, this, this is going to be the, uh, gift that really just, just keeps on giving. So that was a very sobering, uh, presentation. They should have gave out drinks.
Thank you, uh, for having, well, well, wealth of information there. Uh, not much of the happy news, I guess we, we, we come away with another unfunded mandate.
Yep.
On, on PFAS, and for everybody's benefit, an unfunded mandate is when they tell us to do something, uh, from either the state or federal government, but then we don't get any money to do it. So I guess it pays for it, you do. Um, so we're, we're constantly, constantly on the, on the lookout to, uh, lobby against any such unfunded mandates unless they have a real strong benefit to the town, which frankly, they usually don't. Um, on the PFAS litigation, I think it, uh, makes sense to have our town attorney, um, look into and report back to us. Uh, uh, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a very odd lawyer. I don't like litigation, um, even though I did it for a living. But if, if we're going to be held accountable for some things and, uh, rather than come out of the treasury of the town and citizens of, of Indian River Shores, um, there may be a class action that has a, uh, uh, class, class actions, you can have a, a deadline where you either opt into the class or don't. Um, in other words, just find out our options. Do we have to file our own case, which would be consolidated with the MDL cases? Or would be, uh, required to, um, join a class and, and see what our options are? Uh, together with any financial impact?
Yes, sir. I have a good relationship with Mr. Warren Powell, who's now the city manager for Stewart, who was the city attorney. Um, so I, I live in Fort Bel Air, I'm giving the call.
Right. And just, you know, before we get, you know, a little, little in the clouds about the numbers, um, the wrong numbers that they always present for these settlements, that's a fund that's established. And sometimes they calculate the fund on the basis of the 30-year life of the fund and what they anticipate the, uh, the, the investments would be that would, that would gather that fund. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the city of Stewart's gonna get over a billion dollars. They'll probably get a fraction of that. And one of the reasons why I don't like litigation is guess who makes most of the money in these things? You guess the lawyers, right? So they're gonna get a big chunk of the fees. But I think it's worthwhile looking into to see if, uh, there's a way, uh, we can join the class and make sure we're, we're not on the outside of this, so.
Yes, sir.
You agree, Sam?
Hundred percent.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, is there anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, and thank you for, for that presentation. Uh, we'll move to item eight, which is discussion with possible or probable action. Uh, item A is ordinance number 563. That's the repeal of section 161.6, association approval. Um, this is a first reading. I'll, I'll turn it over to our town attorney for the appropriate reading. Uh, but my understanding is that this has to do with kind of an arcane section of our, um, land development code which required, um, an applicant going to the, uh, to the town building department to show that they had checked all the boxes with their homeowners association. And it was kind of something that never really happened. Is that basically what, what we're talking about here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's accurate. And I would have to allow Mr. Harper to kind of give a little more back.
Okay.
In conjunction with Mr. Hell.
Yeah, really, um, outside of anything I indicated in the agenda transmittal, don't really have anything to add to that. It was just an issue of, uh, private third-party, um, by ordinance having some say over, uh, what could be considered a ministerial action by the government to issue a building permit when they met all the legal requirements under state law and your town ordinance. So that's kind of what led us to.
All right. So we're, we're repealing an ordinance, um, is, is there any public comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, if I may read the title or open up the public comment.
Okay, bye.
Yes, sir. Uh, ordinance number 563, ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, repealing section 161.16 of the land development code, required HOA, condominium association, building plan approval, providing severability, providing field deal, and providing protected date. This is the first.
All right, with that reading, is there any public comment on, on this, any at all? All right, there being none, we will proceed with a roll call vote. Again, this is the first reading.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater.
Aye.
Let the record show the motion passes three zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, item 8B, this is ordinance number 564. The long-awaited Florida City Gas Franchise Agreement, uh, the long-lasting for us for approval, at least on first reading. So, uh, gentlemen, why don't you, uh, read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. And this is ordinance number 564, ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, granting pivotal utility buildings a EPA courtesy gas, its successors are assigned a non-exclusive gas franchise, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing the town with the right to impose monthly franchise repayments to the town, providing for adoption, representation, repealing all ordinances and contracts, providing a severability clause, and providing protected date. This is the first.
Thanks, that's the first reading. Is there any public comment? All right, uh, there being no public comment, any questions, comments from council?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
If you turn the page to 136 of our, of our packet, it'd be section seven. Installation of gas mains map. of gas mains, map of gas lines. About halfway through there, there's two sentences, I just have a question. After completion of the installation of any facilities, two copies of complete location maps will be furnished to the town. The franchisee and the town shall cooperate, respect the confidentiality or the form and format of the, of the location map. Given there's a service called 811, that you call if you dig around your property, which I've used, those locations would have to be public in order for that service to work. So, I'm, I'm a little bit of a head-scratcher in terms of those two sentences.
Uh, those, that provision is fairly broad. Uh, in other words, it would be applicable to main transmission lines and, and things like that. Well, we definitely appreciate the, um, uh, you know, the 811 provisions associated with finding out where gas lines are for localized, uh, digs or things like that. Um, overriding, uh, security concerns, uh, as reflected in, uh, chapter 119 in public records, uh, would really allow some of those things to be exempted confidential from general public scope, disclosure. In other words, let's say the entirety of the distribution map, uh, as a whole, uh, for security purposes. Uh, other things associated with those lines that, that could be a, you know, a potential public safety hazard.
All right. Thank you. So, the way you read it, and I suspect the way I read it, uh, was that the cooperation on the form and format could also be read to include creating, let's call them non-confidential maps, that will show the location of means that are of interest to homeowners and other utilities.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Um, all right, with that, is there a motion to approve?
To move second.
Uh, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Atwater?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion passes 3-0.
All right, item 8C, ordinance 565, land development code amendments, first reading. Uh, we are going to start with a PowerPoint overview, uh, from, uh, town manager Harper.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and council. Uh, as maybe aware, we've been working on the land development code ordinance review for some time. The item we're reporting today represents phase one, uh, which we, uh, hope to have, uh, we hope to have addressed, uh, essentially, uh, compliance issues with, uh, the state statute, state rule and regulation, uh, internal consistency and agreement within the document itself, uh, as well as some, uh, functional changes in terms of the actual administration of the code. Just looking forward a little bit, our, uh, our phase two, uh, we're anticipating having a workshop, uh, concurrent or associated with the planning, zoning and variance meeting in November, uh, public workshop on really some of the remainder of the items that we're looking at that would be subject to, um, maybe more public interest than some of these technical changes that we're making right now. The idea then would be to take those items and hopefully have a, a, a phase two ordinance and changes prepared for discussion, uh, by, uh, January 8th. Excuse me. This is a very, uh, high-level overview on the PowerPoint presentation that reflects, uh, the changes in some of the chapters that are not specifically within the land development code but have, uh, implications within the land development code. Uh, and I'd certainly not read through each one or go into details in that regard. Um, then as we, uh, move on with the next one, with the next slide, uh, those are actual, the actual changes within the land development code, uh, code, uh, construct, uh, and how to go to the next one. Again, I don't want to read through all of these because you have the substantive information in your packet and it was, uh, already distributed, uh, but it's just a reflection of, uh, some of the general things that we've been, uh, trying to address, again, relative to consistency, compliance and, and administration. Uh, the next step for phase two is, I noted, uh, we will look much deeper into some topics, and the topics that are noted on here are not exclusive. They're just an example of some of the types of topics that we're going to look at, uh, because of the timeframe associated with, um, a, a substantive review of some of these topics. And again, statutory changes and otherwise, uh, a, as well as just background changes for things like the sea turtle protection and, um, you know, and floodplain management and things like that. So, uh, with that, I don't have any further. I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions that, uh, council may have.
No, thank you for, uh, thank you for the itemization in the packet.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was remiss, I should have upfront, uh, thanked, um, all of our staff, uh, that worked on this. A lot of people, you know, looked at this to include our town clerk, uh, our building official Fred Hill, spent a lot more time with me than he wanted to, uh, knocking through a lot of these items, um, and so I, I really appreciate all the input that we had, uh, you know, across the town, um, on, on this part.
Thank you. Well, then, thank everybody. Uh, that was a vulnerable process. You made it very clear, and a lot of these are just clean up from things that were preempted to things that just don't match our current practices, and, um, I think it's, uh, in good order and I appreciate it. It's, uh, it's great to have a code that people can read and actually makes sense internally because if you look at one section, it doesn't necessarily correspond to the other. Uh, is there any public comment on this item? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. Uh, ordinance number 565, ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, revise and updating and moving and repealing the code of ordinances of the town of Indian River Shores as follows. Chapter 34, apartments, chapter 32, council and town officials. Chapter 50, general provision. Chapter 19, animals. Chapter 98, tree protection. Chapter 111, specific businesses. Chapter 150, business regulations. Chapter 151, electrical regulations. Chapter 153, housing code. Chapter 160, introduction, zoning districts, design standards. Chapter 161, supplemental regulations. Chapter 162, off-street parking and loading. Chapter 163, landscaping and walls. Chapter 164, signs. Chapter 165, floodplain management and damage prevention. Chapter 166, subdivisions. Chapter 167, environmental regulations. Chapter 168, development review procedures, providing for context, providing for severability, and providing rent effective. This is the first.
All right, the first reading. Is there any public comment on any of the 400 sections that are referenced here? All right, uh, there being none, is, uh, there any discussion among council? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve in a second.
Some more. Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Atwater?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion passes 3-0.
Thank you. Item 8D, 2024 town council meeting dates and holiday schedule and the remaining council meeting dates for 2023. Uh, council's been, presented those proposed dates, um, and we're now here for discussion. Uh, I, I would just note in the, in the beginning that, uh, since we can't talk to each other about this stuff informally, that, uh, I've asked the town manager and, and, uh, our town treasurer to try to, for lack of a better word, compress the dates toward the end of, uh, August and September because we have state requirements for budget, budget meeting, uh, readings, and while they're pro forma, it's, uh, for people who are on vacation or otherwise, uh, have other things in their schedule, uh, it seemed to me that if we had dates that were a little bit closer in time to the, to the council meeting, which has to be in August, and then the budget meeting has to be usually early in September, uh, it may, it may make it easier for, uh, logistics and accommodation. Uh, I'm going to ask the town manager to work with each individual council member to, uh, maximize availability for people to attend these meetings, uh, so that more, most importantly, we have a forum, but, uh, again, also importantly, that they have the opportunity to participate, uh, without interfering with vacation plans and the like. Uh, with that said, uh, we'll open it up to council for discussion on the proposed dates. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Some more. Second.
Uh, I guess we need a roll call vote on this as well. Uh, might as well.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Atwater?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion passes 3-0.
All right, thank you. Uh, item number nine, staff updates, building official report and statistics.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, council members, Fred Hill Building Official. And to start with, I would like to give a brief summary of the building department of the report for July 2023. Uh, overall, the permit issuance and valuation for reconstruction have increased, uh, in relation to the 2021, 23 fiscal year to date. Uh, there was a slight increase of permit issuance activity in regard to multifamily condition and alteration projects for July of 2023. Uh, miscellaneous permit issuance shows a decrease from 2021, 22 fiscal year to date with an increase in valuation for the current 2022, 23 fiscal year to date. And inspections and family reviews have decreased in direct correlation with the permit and permit intake. Now, I'll continue more closely with the deputy town manager to determine that the fee increase will be, uh, needed for next year. Uh, next, I'll discuss the, um, mandatory structural inspections, also known as milestone inspections, as it relates to the town and touch on the mailing of milestone letters. Uh, we're all familiar with the collapse of the condo building and the surfside Florida occurred in June of 2021. And due to this tragedy, the Florida government reacted in May of 2022 by enacting the mandatory inspections for aging condo maintenance, and that was under Florida statute, section These mandatory inspections are called milestone inspections and include inspections of low-gearning walls and primary structural members and systems that currently inspected by licensed architect or engineer in the state of Florida. A condo co-op association must have a milestone inspection performed for each building that its three stories were more than height by December 31st of the year in which the building reaches 30 years of age based on the date of the CO. If the building is located within three miles of the coast line, the code, the condo or co-op association must have a milestone inspection performed December 31st of the year in which the building reaches 25 years of age based on the date the CO was issued. So, in this case, that would be the town of Indian River Shores, it's where Bari Island. Any condo or co-op that is three or more stories in height would have to have the milestone inspection done within that 20, within 25 years. The, if a building CO was issued on or before July 1st, 1992, the building initial milestone inspection must be performed before December 31st, 2024. If the date for the CO is not available, the date of issuance of the CO shall be the date of occupancy established in any record of the building department. Upon determining that a building must have a milestone inspection, the local enforcing agency, the building department, must provide written notice of such required inspections to the condo or co-op association by certified mail return receipt requested. The condo or co-op association must complete phase one milestone inspection within 180 days of receipt of this letter. So, what I did is I prepared the letter for the condo association boards based on a list that I received from the DDP. And then what I would do, based on the CO dates, I'll mail those letters out within 180 days of when I need that report back from the condo or co-op association from a highly known engineer or architect that's licensed in the state of Florida to do the phase one inspection. Once that phase one inspection is completed, they'll send that back up to the, to DDPR as well as a copy to the building department from our records. So, uh, and furthermore, currently, I'm working with the, uh, building department professional staff and editing and checking one of the amendments of the Florida building code to present to the council, and then I'll send that up to the Florida building code, which you can file as well.
Terrific. Thank you. Um, so, here's an example of an unfunded mandate, right? So, more, more work. Um, so, I, I don't think we have any enforcement mechanism though, right? We're just the, we're just a reporting agency if somebody's in or out of compliance, or is that unclear?
Essentially, yeah. It, it refers to, um, us as a repository or clearinghouse when they're requiring to issue notices, but there's nothing in the statute that would indicate, you know, that, uh, this is what happens if they don't, they being the condo association, um, at least in my understanding, if they don't do that, what, you know, what are the ramifications?
Right.
We are not seen as the actual enforcement agency itself.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I follow that, uh, and council, uh, what I expect will happen is that there will be, and not just in the town of Indian River Shores, but many, many, many inspections, particularly in South Florida or the West Coast, where there's multiple more than we have within our jurisdiction. And some of these are going to fail, and they're going to be very, very expensive to remedy because, again, if you have a 10, 12, 15-story condo that is structurally positioned in some capacity, that's going to be very expensive to remedy, which will then lead to us also being involved, permitting agency for whatever it is. But I will mention, the enforcement mechanism that I'm aware of is more on the private side. And what I mean by that is there's a requirement in the statute that'll have it in front of me, I call it, but essentially, whatever the requirements are to bring the fund up for remediation, um, no longer can be deferred. For many, many years in Florida, they've had the ability to take a superleguality vote within a condo association and defer that cost. And in many cases, I've been told by colleagues, they've deferred it for 25, 30 years. Um, because, again, a new roof, uh, a new foundation or adjustment to a foundation is not five or $10,000, it's a million or two or five. Spread along to maybe 100 units in a building, uh, that's a lot of money, even if you program it over, say, five or 10 years. Now, they're being forced to bring that up within, I believe, three years, essentially the same time. So, what I believe you can see is a lot of communication back from our condo association managers, um, talking about what that costs. That is not certainly a purview of this town, but I want to make sure that the town is aware of what I expect may happen toward on the other side of the equation.
I, I suspect in a town like ours, the pressure on market values and the, the obligation of the condo association boards to protect the value of the assets is probably going to be greater than perhaps in other communities that, uh, um, that don't have the resources of the folks in the town. One further question, and that is, you know, the inspectors. Uh, I remember reading when the statute was first proposed that, um, I, I remember coming to the conclusion that it's not our responsibility to do the inspection, uh, it's a private, they have to hire a private qualified engineering firm to do that. Okay. All right, terrific. So, sort of my friends doesn't have to go out and do building inspections as part of, uh, you know, condo safety, and that's a good thing. So, all right, great. That's all I have. Any questions for?
Uh, just one question on the, on the permits. So, uh, year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, they've gone down from 39 to 20. Are we just running out of billable lots in the town? From, from my experience, just driving around, it appears that we are running out of billable lots with the volume, the activity that Caesar taking the older homes, tearing the ground and rebuild. That's what I'm saying out there.
Terrific. Great.
You have any questions?
No, thank you.
Great.
Yep. You seem to have made a fairly seamless integration into the position, and, uh, thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it. Yep. Uh, town treasurer?
Morning. You received my 220th report, and I have plenty of questions that you might have, as I know that if we're going to report the one with the June 30th, you're probably pensioning that one, so to give you a signalation on that. No questions? Um, in the 220th part, we are working on getting all the final budget for next week so that we will have a, the only change we currently have on revenues from the state somewhat up, somewhat down from my estimate that we do in July. Um, I am also asking for benefits moments and property insurance. We just, uh, the general liability and property insurance was a focus of about 57% versus my estimate for. So.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven percent in our liability.
So, I'm making the assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, that it was mostly on the property side. Okay. And that, that was discussed at far away, a city meeting. There was a pretty nice presentation, unfortunately, I haven't put it up on the website. I tried to take pictures in my iPhone, they didn't look real, real good, but, uh, so that's what the Florida municipal insurance, right? We, we use that. Uh, okay. Because I was trying to ask them what their increase was going to be, and they want to answer my question.
Mayor, here are your office.
Here, here, the cost statement, so hang on, I'm going to decide.
Oh, really? Okay. So that, uh, alright. And, uh, I'm just sorry, one thing on that point, uh, one thing that came up at the, at the meeting and the town manager, I've been talking about this is making sure that our replacement cost valuations are up to date. You've been doing some, some work on that or started?
Yes, I'm working with Heather, we're, we're, uh, they are up to date based on our, um, current review, the policy and the, um, and the values that we got for them. The estimated values are.
From, from the engineer?
Through our, yeah, basically through our, you know, reapplication process.
Okay. Alright. Because that was a point that the three speakers, every one of them emphasized, get those, get those to the right number because your insurance company will try to walk away from getting replacement cost if you're low ball on those, those estimates. And, and as I think everybody on this today would, would expect, uh, insurance is going to keep going up in part because the reinsurance companies are, have just pulled capital out of the market, so it's going to be ongoing.
Yep. It, it's not like in the commercials where they just replace your, your home. It's, uh, and, uh, it's amazing, you know, I never thought I'd reach a point where I'd breathe a sigh of relief because my homeowner's property insurance only went up 50%. Having seen what other folks deal with. Um, all right, anything else for?
I would just want to know, I was in fact, we got 475, 185 funds this past year. We're back to levels from 2021, 2022, how they, their best numbers were the total combined number we got was about 399,000. And I have another couple of questions.
How many, how many do we have? How many PSOs do we have in the 175, 185?
I was saying about 21, 23, I have not, I'm sure that I did, but I forgot the number later today.
All right. Thank you. Alright. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Uh, public safety, Chief Stone?
We had a complete screen job with Mike's.
Won't be the first time that's happened, so.
Nor being screened back. Um, just to bring you over to the, like you think that we do have one of our, our ladder truck that has a service this week, we're down the block, there's a very expensive maintenance update needed to be done. Um, uh, every year you've got to decrease and recrease off the letters and put in parts and our comps and so, uh, that is down there this week, we should be back locally by Friday. Um, the, uh, we finalized some of our training aspects and some of our forms that we're using on the fire on the website. Um, we've got the procedure remaining that reschedule released, uh, which is fairly expensive. Um, and we also have renewing laws that come in, uh, milestones that are built into all the aspects on the fire rescue side, which is the, um, uh, 3.6 month time in, in one year, uh, and first, and first time, where they have to have these specific milestones for paramedic and the fire, and, and the fire side. Um, our law enforcement group is very busy, it closed out a number of, um, park bases that we had, that we had working, uh, some of those in, you know, with some rest. And, um, and our guys have also been extremely active and had a number of, of, uh, good, good arrests. Uh, one group that was out of the field training officer, had a, uh, a minimum point, had two, two U guys for nine, which is kind of unusual for us to have that kind of activity. Um, so, um, but, uh, yeah, everybody, everybody's doing well. Um, we're, uh, got some, uh, some work of our A schedule to go into the advanced, advanced training and I've got two gentlemen from the technical side of the house, they're actually going through advanced road case programming, um, in the next, uh, next month. And, uh, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may ask.
Anything? No? Thank you very much. Uh, keep up the good work and thank your, thank all the guys in the department and ladies in the department for us. Uh, I know the, the, in particular, the law enforcement interdiction and, uh, that was, Johnny on the spot, you know, that could have been bad. So thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. All right. Thank you. Uh, public works department, item 8D.
Good morning, Council. Just a few quick updates on the two projects that we're working on right now. Cemetery repaid and parking expansion, we're looking to be doing in the next few weeks, uh, all the things that come out of that somewhere there. Uh, pedal bay will start paving on September 24th, we're looking at the end of that project again in September. Um, I'm going to, going to plunge this down, I'm sorry to plunge this down, but they, they come to completion by, I can imagine they can be done in there. The other thing they have been on is any of the similar links, the seaford repair. Um, right now they have made this available, uh, doing a few, three weeks on repair, we will gas line coming out of our form, form drain, um, by passing, we're going to prepare our form drain. And then as well, there's a ton of, you know, both of those, a lot of substantial rain problems too thin with it, from a possible system that may come across our, request for these because of Florida, uh, we are prepared for all of our rains ready to be completed.
Terrific. Anything for public works?
Uh, yeah, just one question on, on the cemetery situation, and maybe this is more for Heather. Is, is all that being funded out of the cemetery farm?
Um, so the council, I don't, are being paid by the, but the most part, there are almost 100,000 from the, over the, the cemetery farm. So it's worth around like $3,000 left over there.
Okay. So that one's just coming out of the general fund then? Four, four?
$15,000.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Code enforcement, 9E.
Morning.
Morning. Had a busy month?
Yes. Decent one. Um, just two things I wanted to report, uh, real estate signs, may I, may I come in rare, it's creating a lot of enforcement, urgent investigation, um, there they couldn't get up signs, I can't afford it. Given the regular, you know, explain what the process is and how it's, how it's working with us. Um, and then the next item would be the deed crossovers. Initials started out with 57 total.
Excuse me. Get those were the 57 unpermitted deed crossovers.
Um, had those 57, 22 remaining, so we've got quite a handful of those. Um, and others 22, now you have permits to the building department that are not approved yet, which leaves the 13,000 permits and those properties, which have been sent the final rate since the buyer's, the buyer's. But other than that, if you want, any questions from council?
Yes. Uh, Sergeant, um, I have a letter dated August 9th from Scott Bell. Uh, Scott and his wife Debbie are real estate agents. Um, and, uh, I know Scott, he's the former Gofford superintendent at Redstep and Debbie's been in the real estate business for 24 years and Scott has now joined her, they're, they're a team. And, um, Scott sent me a letter, uh, um, that has to do with open house signs, which you, um, address in your memo to, to council. And, um, um, uh, the, the, the main point of the letter is that, um, he noticed that although his sign, you all asked him to take down his sign, that there were other open house signs on A1A in, in, um, gated communities within just a half mile or so, were still up, that were not taken down. So he sort of feels like, for whatever reason, he was discriminated against. Um, but he goes on to say that, um, um, talked about the value of open house signs, um, and the possibility of getting some sort of variance. Uh, this, this reminds me of, in a way of the issue we had with dogs on the beach. Can there be certain times, certain places where, where, um, open house signs can be displayed? And I know we have awareness against it entirely, but in deference to my good friend Scott, I wanted to bring this to your attention, Sergeant, and to the attention of the town manager. I'm going to leave this letter with you and have you, uh, deal with it as you see fit.
Yes, sir. Um, and Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to point out, we, we all got, sent the letter to all of us, but thank you for raising the point.
Um, uh, yes, sir. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, um, this is definitely on our, uh, on our radar relative to the open house sign. Uh, we had discussed it earlier in our phase one, uh, reviews of the land development code and code generally. Uh, but, uh, you know, based on, and I, I actually met with Ms. Bell, she was here at town hall, so we're actually taking a look at the open house piece in the, in the, in the construct that you actually just referenced, which would be, whether they needed, is it going to be a, an adverse effect on, on the town in terms of aesthetics? Uh, could there be limited timeframes when it's appropriate where everyone would expect to see a, an open house sign? We're, we're looking at that right now and we're probably, uh, because the phase two changes don't look like they'll be completed until January, we're looking at a few things individually, such as this now to bring to council for discussion and contemplation before that.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Scott, uh, over phone when he sent me the letter and I said, would, would you be willing that when you're just putting the signs up over, over the weekend, when the open house is done that day, you'll say on a Saturday, pull the sign and then put it back up the next day so it doesn't sit overnight? And he's only one reorder and he said he didn't have a problem with that. And I think that's a reasonable comment.
So, couple of observations from me. Um, I guess when something happens to you, you notice that it's not being evenly enforced against somebody else, but sometimes that happens. You have to, you have to be, uh, noticed and caught, for lack of a better word, in order to enforce it. So we just have to ensure that we have equal enforcement of all ordinances against residents of the community. Uh, second point I would make is that I, is, my understanding is there's not an absolute prohibition against signs, they just have to be of a particular dimension, size and shade. His was bigger than what the ordinance, um, currently committed. So, um, you know, I suspect that during the workshop phase, if there's a real, a real problem from the Realtor community at large, uh, we'll probably hear from them and, and I think we'll be happy to entertain some suggestions for reasonable accommodations. But one of the things in my view that makes this community different is we're not peppered with signs everywhere. Everything from mosquito services to an open house happening in three months to you want to rent the place, call this number. So we have to strike a balance between reasonable commercial accommodations, uh, and, uh, letting the situation get out of control and completely can change the character of our community. So I think that's best dealt with, you know, in a workshop and presumably that was part of the, uh, communication. I know I spoke with the town manager and said that he should be encouraged to attend and, um, I think we're pretty full reasonable up here, we listen to any reasonable accommodations that can be made.
I, I just, I'm sorry, because I, I do think in this case, given we're approaching season, if we're going to make a modification, time is a little bit of the essence in terms of if somebody has their property up for sale, they're, they have more of a chance to sell during the season than during August, where you could fire up a machine and not have anybody on their way for a few times. So, I mean, I think that's something we have to, we have to think about.
And Mr. Mayor, Council, just very briefly, within the last 10 years, litigation, both at the federal level or all the way up to the US Supreme Court, down to the most level, has really focused on content of sign. And, and I just want to caution this council as we work through this process, um, the, the purview generally has been now limited to, as you said, objective dimensional basis for signage, because again, the content is really crossover to control potentially by government of speech. So open house, uh, does happen in Oregon a certain way, can include a language, what's the difference between open house and yes, if there's a new home for sale, you can see the slippery slope that this could lead to. I certainly gulped a minute in portions of this, but I want to be cognizant of, there's a balance, not just sort of points already made, but on a much higher level, allowing that compared to whether it's a lumber seller, if, if any number of things, dog walking, you should be cognizant of what can be in those signs. So again, I, I certainly want this council to be aware of that as we move through the process.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Well, that, that's why you make the big money.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
What we can't, uh, do and, uh, I guess that's up to us to decide.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, town attorney?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would just briefly follow up, uh, on a comment made earlier when we were making a report that we all and have filed with the Florida Supreme Court as mentioned. And, um, at this point, we are in a waiting pattern, but as we would receive something, and there's no deadline, I just want to reiterate that from the Florida Supreme Court. This is very similar to what many end up learning about the US Supreme Court, there's not necessarily a time for, unless it finally gets on to adopted or accepted. So we don't know, we don't have the ability to pull the Florida Supreme Court to see. Um, so we are truly waiting and as soon as we receive anything, I almost certainly hand it to the town manager, distribute it to council. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Yes, sir.
Question. Uh, frequently when items appear before the Supreme, the US Supreme Court, you read about, uh, friend of the court, yes, please, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I'm just curious if, uh, during our negotiations with, uh, Holloway Knight, um, if there was contact made with any of the municipalities that have franchise agreements, um, asking whether or not, or asking whether or not, um, those who had franchise agreements would consider writing letters in support of our, uh, plea before the Supreme Court of, of the state of Florida?
Yes, sir. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, as we have postured now, we're not really truly in front of the Supreme Court yet, we are asking them to invoke their jurisdiction, assuming that they would accept jurisdiction moving forward, we would then actually brief them. And at that time, it would probably be most, I cannot speak for, for, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cox, if they've already reached out any other, but assuming they would, you would hope to receive maybe an amicus support from any number of organizations. A similar situation as we know has been unfolding in Gainesville over the last two years, there are other, but it's interesting because, and if they, uh, Captain Haller can speak to, there's a divide within the municipal world in Florida because they, the other side of the coin is there are probably plenty of utilities controlled by municipalities that have no interest in seeing our position. I certainly don't expect it to be too much, but, but I do think what position is appropriate to explore, should we invoke jurisdiction, receive it, um, reaching out to whether, again, our city, a private provider, an organization that would support it from a business perspective, and amicus would be an appropriate perspective.
When he said, amicus curate, friend of the court?
Yes, sir.
And there are anything but friends of the court, but it's one of those phrases that just stuck. So if the jurisdiction wasn't both, I would, I would, uh, I'm not a betting man, but I would bet that there will be amicus curate agrees on both sides of the issue because it would be that important for municipal power, authorities, uh, and, and this happened in the electric cases as well, where probably a number of, a number of amicus. Excellent question and hopefully we would get some word from people in our position.
Well, I'm, I'm going to tell you, Florida City will come down, if, if they do, it'll come down against us. I joined our legislative policy committee on utilities specifically to push this point. And what they did, they pulled a pass on, they moved this issue over to the municipal administration committee and came down in favor of, uh, utilities who are charging the money to be able to keep that, that, that power. Extremely upset.
It, it's not surprising, uh, given the fact that the larger municipalities tend These cities may tend to be the municipalities that have their own utilities that like transferring money to their general fund from the utility.
Orlando is, I mean, I don't know what they do now. Years ago, when we were in the electric fight, I looked it up, they were transferring sixty seven million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you if you should have any other questions, please reach out.
Thank you. Alright, town manager report, Mr. Harper?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Um, just a couple of items. Uh, on the sector four, critical erosion designation piece, uh I have a meeting next week with uh DEP personnel along with uh our, you know, our friends from Holland and Knight to uh to help move that forward. And you're, we're pushing forward on that. That's, that meeting's on the twenty eighth. Um, on the solid waste piece, the RFP with uh the county that's set to, or the county still is uh looking towards an October issuing date. Uh, on the RFP, they do not need to go back to their county commission, uh because they've already been provided with parameters for it. So, we continue to uh work on that. I want to specifically thank um uh our building official, Fred Held and Sergeant Mykranz, who assisted in uh some of the more detailed audits uh to get all the information we needed for that because they are out of field. They have great familiarity with the buildings and the structures. Uh, and other than that, I just, of course, a generalized thanks to all of our staff who do a great job here. Uh, toil, uh really certainly a way to make things, works moved into town and uh my my sincere thanks to all of them. That's all, yes, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to council and committee reports. Uh, sorry for me, uh I have one one announcement. My my tenure on the Florida lead mayor's board is uh over. After two years, I felt it was time to give somebody else in another municipality a chance to participate in the meetings, uh including the virtual luas, which were becoming a uh a fairly constant event. And that was uh, most of you really want to know, at five o'clock, a bunch of mayors got on a Zoom call and had a cocktail and uh uh shared stories, let me just make it that way. So, uh, so uh that that will be uh one less report that I will have to give.
I can see the tear rolling down.
You know, uh, hopefully you can pick up on my sense of humor. There were, there were some very valuable things uh to be gleaned from it, but the it's time for somebody else to have a shot at it in another municipality. So, uh, with that, the summer, the summer season has many of these councils not having meetings and so that's all I have.
No, of course. Okay, I got a good report to give. Great. So, uh, now, I know you folks can't see it, but the point, the point is that this is the report from the Beach Insurance Preservation Advisory Committee meeting, but it's in the record if somebody wants to get it. If they don't get it, it can't. So, you know, just as a as a bit of background, uh sector, the beachfront is divided into various uh sectors. And most of the town in New River Shores is in sector four. There's a small piece in the north that is in uh sector three. If you would, Heather, if you could flip back to the map and then all. So, so these are the beach management sectors. There's a total of eight about. The critically eroded ones are 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 in red there and almost everything is critically eroded, of course, for sector four. And town managers talked about, we've been in a, in a battle with FDTP to get that to be critically eroded. Reason why that's important, it helps open up a pot of money from FEMA and from the state to do beach replenishment, which we can't do uh at the at the at the at the moment. And the next page that I know, again, just for the record, this lists out the various sectors. So, basically, sector four starts about a half a mile south of Old Winter Beach Road and goes down to Surf路. It's almost to the Tracking uh Park. So, the there there are what they call range monuments along the beach. There are every thousand feet. So, the if you walked out to the beach here, we're approximately, we're close to a range monument uh between, I think, sixty eighth and sixty nine is an example. And sector four runs down to to the seventy two. So, we've been involved in this battle uh for a long time. Remember when I first moved down here in uh two thousand fourteen full time, I went to the meetings of the private citizen and they would, the coastal engineer at the time, which is different than the one now, that's extremely important to know. The coastal engineer at the time, he jumped past sector four. And I said, well, what the hell's going on here? Do we not count? And they're like, well, it's not critically eroded, so we don't even consider it. So, that has evolved over time. The county's become a lot more uh cooperative. Other people have been involved in this fight. We've got a lot of help from from John's Island going over to one of these meetings and so forth. The good news is that we are getting funding for uh sector four. For not all beach replenishment like you see in the other sectors, but to uh help fix the the, to prop up the doom. I'm trying to properly put it better, to make the dooms uh more more resilient. That's gonna be two point three seven six million uh dollars. Now, sector seven, they were supposed to get money. Well, the people down there, lost their hearts for us, did not, there is a easement that a property owner has to sign in order to get the sand. And there's a, there's a lot of uh basically misinformation about these easements. These people told their, well, it's a perpetual easement, people are gonna be able to walk, of course, through my property from west to east to get onto beach. Total absolute nonsense. These are basically uh uh infrastructure units. We all have them on our property. You get water, you get electricity, you have a gas line there. There is an easement that sits there all the time. And this essentially is gonna be no different. So, there's a million, one point eight million that isn't being spent there, potentially, potentially might be redeployed to sector four. In addition, uh, you know, going back to that page, uh Heather, uh, the county has applied for three and a half million dollars for Department of Economic Opportunity for sector four, which we have a reasonable chance of getting. So, right now, the money, the two point four million that we're getting is only going to cover part of sector four, as I understand it. But if we get the additional money, we might be able to do complete sector four. This is the best progress we've made on this issue in in all time. So, if we do get the total uh amount of money, we're gonna have to get eighty nine easements. I'm sorry, will you phrase that? There are a total of eighty nine easements in that area. To run the project, the county has a requirement, they get ninety percent of it. Now, so you do do the math, it's roughly eighty or or so. And as I said, we should think of these as infrastructure easements. So, they have sent the easement to me, I forwarded it to the town manager. I hope you you get it, okay. There was some issue with the our Gmail accounts and attachment. So, keep stripping the attachment off and you gotta put it back on. But at any rate, so, you know, it one, hopefully if they get the three point five million, we need to do a full court press to get these in order to get this done. And and I think it's important to get every single easement. If you go, if you go down toward your house, uh uh Brian, uh about maybe roughly two hundred yards north of Tracking Station Park, there's one property didn't get the easement. So, there is, that that's where sector five starts uh uh down there. So, you have this like dugout where there's no sand and it creates issues if there is a storm and so forth. So, we we want to get all these easements and uh so, but I mean, this is just, this is fantastic news. And, you know, kudos in in particular to County Commissioner Irvin. He, he has been the liaison for the Beach Insurance uh Preservation Advisory Committee and uh I've lobbied him, Mary Al Smith lobbied, other people have lobbied him. He's sort of carried the torch for uh for us. So, just uh, just uh fan fantastic news. So, walked out of there feeling real good. That'll be his last.
Thank you. And and thank you to council members, Smith and and Jimmy, too. I know you're working very hard on this. We we are implementing, or we have implemented a program to reach out to people, tell them the importance of the easements so that we need them.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh counsel, we're in the process of determining uh what role we will actually have. Easements themselves haven't gone out, uh brought it to the county um at the Beach Shore meeting on Monday. They're putting together a packet, uh with explanatory packet, so that when people receive it, it will have a, you know, an outline as to what it is and so on and so forth. I'm hoping that they'll have a frequently asked question piece in there, but I know that um our town attorney is gonna be talking to uh the county attorney, Mr. DeBraul, about, you know, what what that is and what that looks like and the extent to which the county attorney's office is actually willing to, you know, answer some of those uh questions that come up very frequently about the access and so on, um in sort of a peremptory level. Uh, we've offered to the county to provide our uh community center uh for an open forum where uh we would publicize uh, you know, the forum so that we can have the county personnel to include county beach and shore spokes and the county attorney's office here present, uh as well as any council members or others, uh to actually have a one to one so that um, you know, we're not ending up being a go-between between the county attorney's office and the individual property owners.
Okay. Um, alright, I understand all that and I understand that we have to always define the lines of appropriateness in terms of what we do and don't do uh in this. But, you know, I certainly believe that the process of contacting and educating um those that are recipients of the easements is well within the propriety and like, I don't think any of us up here have any qualms with our staff, you know, using, you know, taxpayer time to to stress the importance of that. And uh, as simple as Councilman Alwater points out, you really want to be the only, the only house that doesn't have any sand in front of it and you know the rest of the, the rest of the community does. And um, from that simple to just, you know, kind of encouraging civic mindedness in in this. And, you know, we're the recipients of, um, I think, some misguided judgment in sector seven because this freed up the money for us. And we don't, we don't want to trickle over our own shoelaces doing the same thing. So, anything we can do, uh and I'm sure all of us would be willing to go knock on the door, sit down, have a coffee, talk with these folks and say, you know, this is really in your best interest as well as the town's best interest.
As soon as we get the packet from the county, we will um, you know, move forward with a a plan of communication and so forth.
Right, thank you very much. Um, is there anything else?
Uh, there was just one page in there that has been very successful, uh turtle, turtle season. We had, we've had record accounts of turtle, nest, uh, you know, we're both uh loggerhead and all up, loggerhead up fifteen percent, greens up forty seven percent. Uh, leatherbacks uh was the only ones down, but they they tend to go in a in a two-year cycle. But we we beat the previous records by, so, now that's uh, that's good news in the feminine environment.
Terrific.
So, that's it for me.
Alright, it's now time for call to the audience. Any anybody in the audience want to bring up any items? If there are none, then uh I suppose we can adjourn. So, uh, next month. So, we'll see you, see you next month.